Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Penfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting is being videotaped in order to comply with the COVID-related statutes, regulation, I guess. It's also being broadcast live on the town of Penfield's website, penfield.org, town's government access channel, which is 1303, and its streaming media devices, Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. You can search "Penfield TV" in your app store, and if you download it, it's free. If you would like to address the board on any specific matter tonight, there's going to be an opportunity for you to do that by coming up to these microphones here if you're in person, if you're watching from an outside location. You can address the board in one of two ways. One is to call 340-8771. The other is to file an electronic question or comment, also through the website, penfield.org. We like to say that each and every meeting, we start with a work session, which tonight will probably take us about 10 or 15 minutes, maybe a little longer, and then we'll go into the public hearings for tonight's agenda. When we have people speak, the applicants, we'll ask them to come up to these tables here and give us name and address, and then the board member that's assigned to the particular application will lead the applicant through the application. Everyone's filed very thorough, written applications. We reviewed them all, and when appropriate, gone to the site and looked at the site. And so therefore, it really works best, we find, when the board member leads the applicant through the process. Of course, that doesn't mean that people can't speak what they feel they need to about the application. Everyone will be given an opportunity to do that, as will, as I've already said, members of the public that care to comment on the application. We'd like to point out every month that we think the town does a really good job of making sure that members of the public are aware of what's happening with this board, and that they know they can come in and speak about an application if they choose to do so, or again, call or file an electronic comment. How does the town do that? Well, many ways. One way is they send postcards to property owners near the site of the application, notifying the property owner, hey, this is going to be heard, it's on the agenda. If you have anything questions about it, or do you want to come in and speak your mind, do so. I'm sure many people here have received such postcards. The town also requires the applicant to post a sign on the property, looks sort of shaped like a for-sale sign, but it notes that the property's under review, and here's a phone number you can call with any questions. And the town also posts the agenda on its website, and actually still does it the old-fashioned way here at Town, I think. I say that every month, and I'm like, yeah, I think so. So, in any event, we think it works good. We have people come in, let us know their opinions on it, and it actually helps us do our job, and we appreciate that. That being said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And our first order of business in the work session is the approval of the minutes from the meetings on August 15th, and then, I guess, the special meeting on August 18th. We've had them and reviewed them. May I have a motion? God bless you.
Thank you.
So moved. Second. All right. So we have a motion by Andres to approve both sets of minutes, and a second by Matt. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, currently, we have two tabled applications. The second one is Empire Boulevard, R G and E, and that the applicant has requested that that continue to be tabled. So I will make a motion to table that application based upon the request of the applicant.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. The next application is one that's been pending for quite some time before this board, and then also, honestly, before the planning board. And that is the cell tower at 1838 Penfield Road, which is the firehouse near the Four Before we get into that, I just wanted to say a couple things, and I'd invite my fellow board members to add anything to this if they like. The first thing I wanted to point out is this matter's been on our agenda, I think, since April or May. We've had several meetings on it, including a special session, that we had some members of the planning board attend with us. The town, this board, and the planning board hired an outside consultant, two, actually, or maybe three even, that, in order, frankly, to test the assertions of the applicant regarding the necessity for the tower, the fact that the applicant was saying there were gaps in service that needed to be closed, and also to put them to the test to demonstrate that there weren't any other sites that would work for the tower. Because the tower is being requested to be put in the Four Corners of Penfield, which is considered by many to be downtown Penfield, if you will, a lot of businesses in the area. So that particular location, it's important for us to really push the applicant on whether or not it needs to actually go there. It can't go anywhere else. And I will say that our outside consultants did conclude, after preparing a very thorough written report, did conclude that indeed, this was a location that was best in order to accomplish the purpose of closing that cellphone gap, and that the applicant did engage in a good faith effort to try to find other locations, and that other methodologies would not work as well to close the gap. I think that's a fair summary of what the outside independent consultant believed and opined for us. We have had, as I said, three or four hearings on this. People have had opportunities to chime in in many ways, come to the town hall, write a letter, send an email, and the reality is, we have had little, if any, concern expressed by citizens about this. Honestly, I think we've all talked a number of times that we live in an age where everybody has a cellphone, everybody wants good cellphone service, and people don't want to be on the phone on an important call, or even a call that might not be that important at the moment, and then lose contact. And that is happening in that area. So, given all of the work that's been put in to this application by the applicant, by our consultant, by staff, by council, by this board, I just wanted to say that I think everyone's done a really good job on the application, and given it due consideration. You still have an application pending in front of the planning board, and you're going to have to convince them to grant you the relief you're requesting there. But I am ready tonight to make a motion to approve the application for some of the reasons that I said, but I know first, we need to start with the environmental review under seeker. So, that motion that I would make is to declare this an unlisted action under the environmental law, and to further declare a negative declaration.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
And again, getting back to the merits of the application, the first thing that I would note is our special counsel on this project, John Mancuso, has done a really good job of giving us guidance on what standards we have to apply for this application. And we have typical standards that, in New York State, that we have to apply for conditional use requests, for area variance, for use variance, but there is a federal statute that does require the application of a slightly different standard here for utilities. And cellphone providers are nowadays considered to be a utility. What does that mean in layman's terms? It really means that they are held to a slightly less standard than other entities that might come in and ask for a use variance or a conditional use permit. Why? Because the government lawmakers have determined that cell towers are nowadays, as I've said, akin to electric providers, or phone, hardline phone providers, or cable providers. I think they're a utility as well for that purpose. So, we are where we are with the statute, and we are bound to apply that standard. And they have to demonstrate that there is a gap in service. I believe they've done that. They have to demonstrate that their proposed solution to close the gap is reasonable and would work. They've done that. Our consultant says they've done that. And then there is an issue about whether placement of the tower there would result in such a significant change to the neighborhood that it overrides the need, and I just don't think that we're frankly even close to that. I do know that we've had some concern expressed about the historical nature of the area, and there's no doubt that that is indeed the case. But my understanding is that the applicant is going to be working to try to mitigate any effects on the historic sites in the area, and that will probably be addressed more specifically with the planning board. So, again, just to note, I think that they have met their burden. They've demonstrated the need for the tower, and the fact that it really cannot accomplish the purpose of closing the gap in any other location. We've done a very good job of pressing them, of holding hearings, taking whatever opinions and comments that we have. We hired the expert. An expert has come in and confirmed that the application is appropriate. They're taking steps to mitigate any visual impacts. And so, again, I'm going to make a motion to grant the use variance. And as far as the area variance goes, then we can apply the regular state standards to that, and you can go through those. Certainly, the variances that they're requesting are substantial from a numbers standpoint. There's no doubt, in my mind, anyway, that it is a self-created issue. However, I don't see any evidence that there's going to be any adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in that neighborhood. I don't think that there are any, excuse me, feasible alternatives to accomplish the purpose that the area variance will. So, all of those factors serve as the basis for my motion to approve. And I'll certainly welcome any additional comments or thoughts.
I'll second your motions.
Thank you.
My only other thought, as it relates, first of all, well said, but as it relates to the area variance, the reason that it is such a large variance that they're seeking is because there needs to be access for the fire trucks in and out, and it is where the fire department has indicated they would only allow the tower to go up to ensure that they could provide the necessary services to people in the neighborhood, in the region.
Good. Good addition. The other thing, actually, when you said "fire department," it reminded me, and I think, right in our town law, that there is a stated preference that towers be placed on government property?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Fire district.
It's not even a stated process. The way it's written is it's required.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, again, that fits well within our, with our code. Anything else?
I think the other thing to note is that when they described where else they could put it, and how else they could, you know, everyone always goes, oh, could you use more smaller towers? Well, they still required one main cell before they could plug in the gaps for other little areas. And I think that's, you know, in terms of the way the infrastructure works, we have to note that, you know, you can't just put little towers up and expect quality service from them.
And the height that they came to was also just the right height to get the adequate service, that...
Yeah. Both, both good points, and I appreciate them as well. Okay. Anything else? All right. Then we have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Take care. All right. So let's just quickly ask, oh, actually, an application tonight has been, I guess, withdrawn until further notice. Is that a fair way of stating it?
They didn't want to withdraw it, they just want to kind of keep it on the back burner.
So table it.
Pause. Pause it.
Yeah. Postpone it to an undetermined future date.
I see Mr. Goldman here. Are you here on that matter?
I'm not, but I can speak to it if you want.
Well, just, what do you, do you want it to be tabled? Do you want it to be taken off for now? We won't charge the 75 bucks to put it back on.
That's fine. We would like to keep it tabled if we can. We are trying to work through some issues with the planning board on an offer, which may, which may wind up, I'm sorry, which may wind up mooting the application. So rather than go through anything else.
Thank you very, I'm sorry, Jerry. Thank you very much, John. Appreciate the hard work. So table it, is what you're saying?
Yeah, please.
Okay. All right. Well, then I'll make a motion to table that. That was...
Number two.
Number two, right? 1801 and 1787 Route 250.
That is correct. That's correct.
Second.
So we have a motion to table in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, that leaves us to three applications tonight, and let's just go through, start with number one, just to see if there's any questions for clarification purposes before we start the public hearing. Anybody have a question on one?
No.
How about on three? Nope. And how about on four?
Nope.
No. Okay. Then let's go right into them. Application number one, please.
Timothy Dieter, 12 Stone Hollow Drive, Penfield, New York, 14526. Requests approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a shed with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F12B of the code at 12 Stone Hollow Drive. The properties currently are formerly owned by Timothy and Susan Dieter, and is owned R-1-20, SBL number 094.18-1-33.1. This is application number 22Z-0045.
Okay. If you could just give us your names and addresses, and then we'll walk you through the application.
Good. Timothy and Susan Dieter, 12 Stone Hollow, Penfield, New York, 14526.
Okay. Great. Go ahead, George.
Absolutely. Well, first off, thank you very much for the thoroughness of the application. It's always nice to be able to read through and get a really good snapshot. I was also able to take a drive out, take a look at the property, so I had a little better understanding of the culvert in the back. So, a couple of questions. And I guess I'll, we'll walk through, just to be clear, you're asking to put a shed with an easement that is, rather than the standard 10 feet from the back line of the property, to 4 feet. So you would like to reduce that by six feet. And could you just quickly walk me through, again, the size of the shed, so we're clear?
Sure. It's a 10 by 14 K pad shed.
Gotcha. And I did see that you did provide a rendering of the shed as well, so we could see. And that pretty much matches the look and feel of the house and the property as well?
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay. Couple of questions, then, regarding the size of it. That's a pretty substantial-sized shed, and you are asking for a pretty, you know, pretty substantial-sized easement. Is it possible that the shed could be a little smaller and still meet your needs, and perhaps reduce the size of the easement that's necessary?
I don't think it's going to make a difference, even if we want a little smaller. I'd struggle to get everything in there that I'm looking to get in there, and it's still going to, the main reason and part of it is the storm sewer easement that goes through the yard. So even with a smaller shed, you're still going to have that easement to contend with. I think if we're the four feet off, we're going to stay out of that, or just to the edge of the current storm sewer easement, and kind of stay out of it. So, that's the whole reason there.
Okay. Understood. And I figured you probably, we're going with the size shed you needed, but we always like to ask if there's a way to kind of mitigate that a little bit. I also took a look, the, I see on the, with the placement on the property, some of the challenges you have with the culvert, they're legitimately, unless you were going to put it in the pool or in the front yard, I'm not really sure where else you would be able to put it on the property.
Yeah, there is another place to put it.
Gotcha. And you did, you did state in the application that you would ensure that the placement and the buildout was such that it would not impede the flow of the water, even if it got close to the edge of the shed?
Correct.
Can you kind of walk me through what you intend to do to ensure that?
Yeah. So, talking with the shed builder and different people, you know, it was brought up about putting on railroad ties or blocks or something like that, and they've kind of steered me away from that. And my original thought was to have it on a crushed stone bed, which I'd still like to do, with the thought of doing some sort of French drainage or drainage around it to allow proper flow, so that there's no standing water.
Yeah. Actually, that's a great idea. The French drain would help mitigate some of the challenges you might have with the flow through of the water. Okay. Have you had a chance to talk to the neighbors that would be behind, and any feedback from them? Any concerns that they expressed to you?
They didn't express anything. You know, I've, he talked to him a few times when I'm out there, you know, measuring and talking things, and let him know that we're planning on putting a shed there, and he didn't seem opposed to it at all, didn't bring anything up, asked me how things were going, you know, with the town and stuff like that, so.
Okay. Excellent. I don't really have any additional questions at this point.
Yeah. Before I open it up to anybody else, let me just remind folks that if they have a comment or question, they can call 340-8771 on this application, or any of the public hearing matters tonight, or they can submit a question or comment through the website, penfield.org. I don't see any comments on either mode now. Anybody else on the board have questions?
Andy, the, what you just put up on the screen, to me, it seems self-explanatory, but just for everybody else's sake, that's the yellow line, the yellow parallel line right now, that, that's the easement that we're talking about, right?
Right. That's the easement area, yes.
Okay. All right. I'll ask anyone in the audience whether they care to comment on this. Okay. Very good. Again, no comments electronically or via the phone, so let's proceed with the consideration first of the environmental.
Yeah. I would submit, this is a seeker type two, no additional action necessary.
I'll second that. So George with the seeker, and me with the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And now on the merits.
So the, you know, the structure and size of the shed meets their needs. It is certainly going to be built well, based on the rendering, so it will match the, both the neighborhood and the home that it will be placed next to. There really is an ability for a placement to be closer due to the easement, and they are willing to ensure things like French drains, and taking the expense themselves if the shed had to be moved for any reason, for access to the easement. I would stipulate as a condition that we note that they do take responsibility to move the shed if necessary for access to the easement. And, you know, the neighbors did not provide any negative feedback, and they aren't concerned with the placement of the shed, so based on those things, I would recommend to approve.
The only question that I have is the crushed stone and the French drain seems like a great idea to me, although I'm not far from an expert in that area, but what can we do, Andy, from a staff, town staff standpoint, to make sure that whatever solution is put in place, we don't have to worry about water puddling, if you will, and not going, not draining properly?
I think we would like to see some kind of a plan, showing how you're going to, what you're exactly going to do there, and then I can have our, someone from our engineering department review that and make sure that's going to work.
George, I'd suggest that that be added to the resolution as well.
Absolutely, agreed.
Plans be submitted and approved by Town.
Yep. Agreed.
Just a plan, sketch drawing, okay? Or does it have to be an engineered drawing?
Doesn't have to be engineered. Sketch is fine. Even a description, you know, of how you're going to accomplish that, make sure that drainage is going to go through there.
Sure.
All right. Then I think we have a motion to approve for the reasons stated, and did we get a second? Did I?
You did.
I think you did.
Did I? Wow. It was four minutes ago. So, any further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Still going back to Town Board for the agreement, or did you already do that?
I think they still have to go back.
I think we still got to do that. I think that got tabled until this got approved.
Yep. They make us go first.
That's right.
Yeah, they always make us go first.
That was good.
Thank you.
All right. Good luck.
Good luck.
All right. So down to number three. Excuse me.
Salvatore Fantuzzo, 1651 Empire Boulevard, Webster, New York, 14580. Requests approval for a special use permit for signage under Section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow a larger freestanding sign than permitted under Section 250-10.12-B1 of the code, with less setback than required under Section 250-10.12-D of the code at 1651 Empire Boulevard. The properties currently are formerly owned by Fantuzzo Family Brands Incorporated and his own limited business, SBL number 093.19-1-22. This is application 22Z-0049.
Haven't seen you in a couple months. And then the last time you had an application, you sent somebody else. We were all looking forward to seeing you.
Happy to be here.
Uh huh. Uh huh. All right. Go ahead there, Matt. Walk Sam through it.
Just for the record, can you state your name and your address?
My name is Salvatore Fantuzzo. My home address is 26 Thomas Maria Circle in Penfield, and the property is 1651 Empire Boulevard in Penfield.
Okay. And you're looking for a special use permit for the sign to allow a larger freestanding sign than permitted, and with less setback than required. The setback itself, it's, you put it exactly where the previous sign was, correct?
It is the exact previous sign. The same frame and everything. I have pictures of the existing, the old sign.
Oh, that would be great, because that was the one question I had, is comparing the sign to the old one. So I would love a picture.
Bring them up there?
Yeah.
How's it work? Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was going to, so this is the new sign proposed in here?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. So you got a side-by-side of the old and the new. Gotcha.
It's the same frame, just they changed the face, and they made it a little higher and lower.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So the new sign, even though it's on the same frame because of the half moon at the top, it sits a little bit higher than the old one does, correct?
Yes.
Does it create any sightline problems, any hazard, any issues?
No, sir.
It's currently up, correct?
It's been up since February 2020.
Yeah. So, and typically, I don't love people asking for forgiveness rather than permission, but probably because you were using the exact same frame in the exact same spot, coming back in for approval didn't cross your mind. Is that, is that fair?
I guess I messed up, but I thought, like, no different than a monument sign. I just thought if you changed the face of it, it wasn't something needed, and then it happened like right before COVID.
So it's been up for two and a half years. Have there been any issues at all as far as dangerous to the community, or are people coming in and out of the parking lot, anything like that?
No, sir.
No complaints? Hasn't caused any traffic accidents or anything like that?
No, sir.
All right. And there's, it's the same as other signs in right along that Empire Boulevard area, correct?
Yes.
All right. So then, the size is bigger. I got it into the same frame, but describe why you went with a, with more surface area on the sign itself.
I just was trying to modernize it. My art department at our office that does our signs decided through this look at it, the actual size of the Empire acupuncture sign is no different, but they just looped around the top, and in the lower part, you could see something shadowed out based on whatever's online, but it did go down towards the flowers on the original sign also. the actual size of the Empire acupuncture sign is no different, but they just looped around the top and in the lower part, you could see something shadowed out based on whatever's online, but it did go down towards the flowers on the original sign also.
And, oh, I see, okay. Okay, I see. All right, I have nothing further.
It, it looks like they increased the size of the numbering to be able to, I guess, recognize the address, is kind of what my guess would be. I guess I'm asking if that was the rationale behind the larger...
I'm not sure if they did that intentionally or just to kind of give it a cool look. I'm not sure.
Okay. I think the answer is yes, right?
Yes.
All right, anything else from the board? Don't see any phone-ins or electronic submissions. Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? I'd just add that I think you've done a great job with that property. I kidded you about coming here, but you have come, you're probably one of our best customers for this, but that's all right. It looks nice, and I think you've done a good job, everyone's done a good job of making sure that the concerns that were expressed before by neighbors have been totally addressed. It's a safe location, it's a good location, so I'm certainly going to support it.
So for seeker, I'd make a motion to declare this an unlisted action with a negative declaration.
Second. Any further discussion on the seeker? All those in favor?
Aye.
And for the, the merits, I would move to approve both, both applications, both the special use permit and the, the, the variance. Sorry, I just had a brain fart. With a variance, it's, it's the same frame, it's the same, in the same place, it hasn't moved. So the only reason that we're here is because it's a little bit bigger than the old one. As far as the special permit for signage, it's in harmony with the neighborhood. It doesn't create a hazard, it's not detrimental. It doesn't interfere with the aesthetic and enjoyment of the public highway. It's, 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 they're looking for a variance for the setback, but it's still off the road, it's still off the sidewalk, and it's, it's a pretty well-traveled area, so probably, it being where it needs to be, or where it is, is where it needs to be so people can see where they're going. So I would, I would make a motion to approve both applications.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
And the last application tonight.
Betsy Brug, Woods Ovegillman, LLP, 1900, Bauchan Lam Place, Rochester, New York, 14604. On behalf of Durst Image Technology US LLC, requests approval for a special use under Section 250-14.3 and Section 250-5.5-B2 of the code to allow an office building use with loading dock at 667 Panorama Trail West. The properties currently are formerly owned by Hanford Health LLC and is owned business non-retail. SBL number 123.20-2-39.11. This is application number 22Z-0050.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Let me introduce everyone who is sitting up at the front table. My name is Jerry Goldman, first of all. I'm the attorney and agent for Durst Image Technology US LLC, who is the applicant here this evening. With us on the application are Tim Sauer, who is the president of Durst. To his left is Andy Hart from Bergman Engineers and Architects, who are the design professionals, and also with us is Timothy, our Tiffany Grusha of, of Durst as well, to my right. We thank you for your entertaining this application this evening, and there's one new piece of information that I'd like to share since we filed the application, and that this matter, as alluded to in our letter of intent, has now been reviewed by the planning board, and the planning board granted site plan modification. They reviewed the planning board, had one recommendation to add a small green area on the, on the site, in the site plan, and we are prepared to do that. So with that, I can present whoever, as Lee can ask, however you want to handle this.
How about we start with the asking?
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's a thorough, very thorough. I was saying, the one nice thing about getting a letter of intent from you guys is you basically cover a whole lot of things in here and make it sometimes almost too easy. So from what I understand, you guys are moving into the former fitness facility, or you want to move into the fitness facility, and really the only big difference is for the change of use. It's, it's okay to move in there, but now we want to add a loading dock. Describe purpose of the loading dock, I guess, a little bit about, you know, when the loading dock will be used, are they midnight runs, are there extra loud horns? What are we working with?
Right, so I can answer that. We're currently in Henrietta right now, basically taking the exact same thing we do in Henrietta, moving it to Penfield. We, the loading dock, we're getting parts, we're basically in the printing industry, so we're getting service parts mainly that will come and go. Some come on pallets, some come UPS, some come FedEx, but I think the main issue becomes the semi-trucks for the pallets. We get between 1 to 3 semi-trucks per day. We close by 6:30 PM, and we don't really open till 9:00. So we're about 9:00 to 6:30 is our standard hours. So we have between 5:00 and 15:00 a week, mainly only for stuff that needs to be delivered on a pallet.
Okay. So I guess if we're looking at, in terms of delivery trucks for the area, no different than a Home Depot or other businesses in the area for the plaza across the street, where trucks...
Yeah, I would say much less, to be honest. I mean, I think, I don't know the exact Home Depot, but I'm sure they're getting a lot more truck runs than we would.
Okay, okay.
And that road is...
Pretty busy already.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, well, Panorama's not, but I guess the, going down there, Penfield Road's fairly busy there.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're talking daytime for the most part, not, you know, into the evenings or anything like that that would interfere with any residential, that would be, I guess, to the...
Yeah, that's correct. It's actually entirely, we wouldn't have an evening semi-truck delivery.
And the loading dock, nothing unique about it, it's a standard loading dock from the plans, what they show there? There's nothing that's...
Yeah, maybe Andy, you answer that, but that's...
It's, it's a single dock, so we aren't going to be talking about a lot of trucks coming at the same time.
Right.
So we're, yeah, we're going to have the, the 1 to 3 sometimes, it may be 0 even on some days. We just don't know, and there could be some panel trucks that come, no different than what's going on in our residential neighborhoods these days. I mean, I'm seeing Amazon trucks and FedEx trucks going up and down almost everyone's residential street, so our volume is going to be substantially less.
Yeah, I think it's important to note, our core business has nothing to do with semi-trucks, it's just needed parts periodically when they come in high volumes.
Sure. Typically, 1 truck at a time, or sometimes they're stacked in the area?
No, always 1 at a time. I mean, honestly, we don't have more than 1 or 2 a day, so...
Sure, so I'm just thinking, in terms of traffic coming in, there'd be no issues where they'd be parked on the side of the road waiting to get in or anything like that?
No chance, no.
And I think your driveway's long enough where they could be in, on, off the road and on your property already.
Correct, there's a redesign of the parking lot to be able to accommodate it with turning movements and everything else. The entry that comes off of Panorama Trail is actually dedicated, it is a, is a town road going into where the cul-de-sac is. And then we have reoriented some of our internal traffic pattern to be able to accommodate the, the 1 truck that we expect to have at any one time.
Okay. That's all I have.
Just for buffering, it's, that Lost Mountain, I think it's a condo complex, is probably the, the closest residential to you, but it sits up on a, a pretty high hill, correct?
That's correct.
Because there's lots of trees and everything buffering, so, so noise, no concern that noise is going to be an issue for those people?
No, I mean, certainly the restricted hours. I mean, when we compare it with what the existing use is right now, and I've been familiar with, I'll, I'll still call it Penfield Racquet Club, you know, but it's been there, it's been there for a long time. There has been a lot of activity, a lot of traffic, and a lot of cars, a lot of car doors slamming, all that kind of thing. This is really contained to be a daytime operation, so to that extent, we don't see noises being much of a factor.
Anything on weekends, do you think, deliveries?
No.
Anything else from the board?
So, yeah, there was one reference to the, the, as it coming and going over at Home Depot. Those, that's 4 lanes there with a, with a light and sub, you know, substantial ability to get in and out. Have you guys looked at, I mean, again, you're not, there are not many trucks, but it is a much tighter road with 2 lanes than it is with the 4 lanes. Has that been accessed and looked at from an engineer perspective?
We have looked at that, yes, and there is enough ample area for them to turn left in. There's actually a center median, I guess, unstriped median in the middle of the road there, so the truck can actually get off the drive, the, the northern driveline and get into that left, be basically a left turn lane.
Yeah, so, so the, the center, the center turn lane does extend down to the beginning?
Correct.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Yeah.
That's my only question.
All right, anything else from the board? I don't see any call-in or electronic, anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Okay, then let's proceed with the consideration.
Okay, I'll move this to type 2 action pursuant to seeker, requiring no further review.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I will move to approve this application. In terms of any kind of detriment, I think that's what our biggest issues there are that we look at.